Uh, morning everybody. We're gonna wait, uh, like two or three minutes to prepare. Uh, for the, whatever, uh, uh, yeah.
And discuss initiative listed on the public agenda. By ordinance, the committee consists of the mayor, members of the city council, and the city administrator. The ordinance mandates the city administrator as chair of the committee meetings. In the public meeting, but not a public hearing, therefore, when the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public questions or questions during the committee meetings. Public numbers and questions are received at the regular city council meetings held at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers are virtually on the second and fourth month, fourth Monday of each month. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the community development transportation committee meeting for September 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Judy, her second.
Second.
Anybody want to say, any questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to community development no action items, we've got on transportation. Item number two, consideration of right-of-way abandonment along Crab Apple Road. Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Gary. I'm gonna be presenting the first two items. Uh, going to share the screen here. Thank you. Uh, item number two is a request for abandonment of right-of-way on Crab Apple Road. Uh, some of the details you see are on the screen, and I'll be showing you a map here in a second that will explain it a little bit better. Uh, there is a lot on Crab Apple Road across the street from, uh, Sweet Apple Elementary and the park, uh, north of the city, uh, before you get to Hardscrabble and Rucker. Uh, the request from the property owner is to adjust his property line on Crab Apple to move it closer to the road and abandon right-of-way. Uh, there's a little bit of history regarding this area. Uh, back in the day, there were aspirational plans for MARTA to extend bus service along Crab Apple, heading up to north into Cherokee County one day. Uh, that was acquired by MARTA as an easement, uh, long ago before this area became incorporated. Uh, over time, uh, due to requests from this property owner, MARTA has officially abandoned that easement along Crab Apple Road, and now the property owner is asking us to abandon the right-of-way so he can move his, uh, front property line up. Uh, this is the lot in question. Uh, the blue line is his existing property line. The area you see in red is the area in question. And again, what he is asking is to basically adjust his front property line to match the corners of 11-895 and 11-925 as seen in the description. The air, the, his request is a length, uh, is a, is a width from Crab Apple of 25 feet. Staff's recommendation, uh, here's a picture from, uh, Crab Apple, showing you where we're talking about. Staff's recommendation here is to actually give up 16 instead of 25. Uh, we would prefer to give up 16 feet across his width of 50 feet due to the fact, uh, as you can see on the screen, the existing sidewalk, uh, we need to keep on city right-of-way. If we were to give him the entire 25 feet, some of that sidewalk would be on private property. So our recommendation, if he's requesting abandonment, is to give him a rectangle of 16 feet by 50 feet, which would be approximately 800 square feet. Again, staff recommendation, uh, when we receive these requests for right-of-way abandonment, uh, the question to the transportation department is, is there a public purpose to keep on, to keep this right-of-way as city property? Uh, our, our recommendation to you is given that there's no longer MARTA easement here, uh, transportation does not see any public purpose for this rectangle. Uh, this item ensures no financial impact to the city, so we recommend approval. Uh, I've, we also got, uh, Jackie Dible, planning and zoning director, on the line, uh, for her to answer any questions, uh, that you may have regarding, uh, zoning or setback or, or implications of what could be constructed on this lot. Jackie, do you have anything to add?
Um, so if you could take a look at the screen that Rob has up here. The house, um, the property, as you can see, is attached to the piece at Crab Apple Lake. Um, and Crab Apple Lake is one of our PRD planned residential zoning, um, subdivisions. And their setbacks for Crab Apple Lake have a front of 20, side interiors of five, and a rear of 20. However, um, if this is approved, obviously, the properties will have to, and he wants to build on this, they will have to do a subdivision, um, of the two, um, part, of the parcels. So then technically, his piece would be, um, fronting as is on Crab Apple Road. The properties on either side of Crab Apple are zoned RS-30. So they technically have a front setback of 50 feet. When I took a look at the houses on either side, that, all the houses on Crab Apple, that front here, which are just three, um, they're sitting back at 100 feet. So I would think if you want to approve this, that you need to put a condition on it to indicate that the house, when built, it minimum would need to sit at the, um, 50-foot setback. Um, but I would think that it should line up with the houses on either side of it, which are around 105 and 100 feet back. So that would be our recommendation. Um, Rob, if you'd show the survey. Uh, uh, that one. As you can see on their survey, they're showing a 20-foot front building line and five-foot sides. Um, so, and side setbacks on RS-30 are 15 feet. So, but if you took 15 feet out from either side of this, that's 30 feet. And since this is only a 50-foot wide lot, um, you wouldn't leave a lot. So I don't know about the side setbacks, but the front setback should technically come back a little bit to so, to at least mirror the homes on either side. Um, that's what I wanted to let you know. Thanks.
That concludes our presentation. We're open to questions. Thank you. Floor is open. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just a quick question. How, and did the property, how did the property become the, uh, belong to the city of Ros-, city of Roswell's right-of-way? Did MARTA transfer it to Roswell, or is this a separate piece?
Uh, my understanding, and Jackie and, and, uh, Mr. Holsey, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, what likely happened here is this was Fulton County right-of-way that the city annexed in, and the easement was placed on the property before the annexation. So the easement rolled over to, to, on top of city property instead of on top of Fulton County property.
I believe that's correct, since this was annexed into the city from Fulton County years ago, and it was, it came in that way. So it's probably pretty correct on that answer.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments?
Oh, good question.
Mayor?
Oh. Can you answer the question, why is the applicant requesting this right-of-way? I'm, I'm not quite sure why it benefits him if we will require him to be well over 50 feet, 100 feet from the property line. What? Does this give him buildable area? Uh, so my question is, and not that you have a crystal ball, but my question is, is this, is the applicant needing the property to develop?
So, Mayor, I can answer that a couple different ways. Um, first, we've asked the applicant that question several times, and his answer has been he intends to build a house on this property. Uh, the second question, yes, from transportation's perspective, if he were to pursue that without this right-of-way abandonment, he still has a path forward. Even though his front property line doesn't match his neighbors, we would be required to still give him a driveway off Crab Apple if he's able to submit a LDP and a building permit and go through the traditional commodev process. So from our perspective, I, he does not need this additional 800 square feet uh, in order to pursue his, his intent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the council? Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Gary. Why don't we, uh, why don't we go with staff's recommendations uh, on both the front line and the setback?
Jackie, can you articulate, uh, what those conditions would be?
So I'm believing the front line would be what transportation indicated and granting them the 16 feet, but not the 25. And, um, setback-wise, the minimum setback for RS-30, which is on either side, is 50 feet. So at a minimum, he'd have to be at 50 feet. Um, however, the houses are at 100 feet on either side of him. So that would be your choice. He either can indicate he has to be at the RS-30 setback requirement of 50 or sit back, um, in line with the houses at 100. And we're good with either one.
You good with that motion, Councilmember Tizer?
I think Councilmember Judy has a question.
Well, I mean, we're, we're just gonna move it forward, but I mean, for guidance, are you, are you fine with that, uh, for staff?
Uh, for guidance, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Judy?
Um, if you look at the houses in these locations, it looks like the prob-, I mean, they're probably gonna go the way of, of this house if he's going to tear that house down and build. Um, so I, I think that if you're looking at larger houses on those lots, the 50-foot buffer is probably where you're gonna be. Otherwise, you're gonna have things go up instead of out. Um, so I'm good with the 50-foot, um, that is in the RS, uh, 30 or whatever. Yep.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Um, I, I just have a question again about how this will work with the PRD in, in the back. So, um, if we have the setback rules, they will work from Crab Apple Road and not from Crab Apple Lake Drive? Or can he, um, reverse it and have them work from that side?
So Rob, could you put up the survey again? Okay, so it's hard to see the end. However, once this is abandoned, the only, the only way to, for him to build a house on this property, since it's currently attached to the one at, um, on Crab Apple Creek, Crab Apple Lake, um, he would have to do a subdivision plat, so divide the property in half. So technically, once that's done, the zoning would not change, but he would not, he would no longer be connected to, um, the Crab Apple Creek Lake property. Um, the rear setback is 20 feet. Uh, I think because the house on Crab Apple Lake is setback so far, that I think it'd be all right. Um, however, the RS-30 setbacks, the rear setback is 40 feet. So we could just apply that to this and say, you have to have a 50-foot front setback and a 40-foot rear.
Hey, Rob, can you bring up a, uh, aerial, um, Google map or something showing the, um, footprints of the buildings? Where is that flat?
This lot on the back that's on Crab Apple Lake, uh, is there a house on that lot?
All right, yes, Mayor, there is. Uh, Gary, I'll be pulling up the street view here in a second.
And is that, uh, I'm assuming, because of the plat, that that house and the house that's on Crab Apple are owned by the same person, correct? It's one lot.
So Gary, this is what you were looking for. This shows structures along Crab Apple, along with the homes on Crab Apple Lake Drive.
I don't see it. Yeah, it's hard to see. Can you pull up the satellite view, Rob? I don't have a sense of lot lines. Um, all right, go back to the lot lines, the flat. Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to see the building footprints, but I can kind of see them. So there is not a house on the subject property, or there is?
There is a home along Crab Apple Lake Drive. There is not a structure on that very narrow piece of land, uh, on Crab Apple.
Okay. Thank you. That's why they need to sort the vision.
So the guy on Crab Apple Lake owns it?
Yes. Okay.
Now, the house on Crab Apple Lake, this is his great big huge backyard that goes out to Crab Apple, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Tizer, was that a motion? I can't recall.
Uh, you, I think you had indicated they, it, there was, there wasn't a motion needed, that you were looking for guidance. Um, just one question on that, on that, uh, map that he just showed. It shows a line separating the property.
Since Councilmember Tizer, you're correct. Um, sometimes that's, uh, a little bit of a discrepancy. Sometimes when you use Google Maps, sometimes when you're using GIS, it's not 100% correct. Uh, based on the surveys submitted to the city and based on our research with Jackie, that, that small property line I just showed you does not exist. It is still one lot and would require the subdivision plat that Jackie indicated.
Maybe a lot of Councilmember Tizer, we can use that as your motion to move it forward with the staff understanding that you're looking at those conditions when we come to council. So if you want to make that motion, that, that will be appropriate.
Eric, I'm not exactly sure what you just said. Um, I think-
If you want to make the motion to move it forward for consideration, we'll take those comments about the conditions and bring those forward to the council meeting when you guys want to vote on it.
That's fine. Thank you. So moved.
Is there a second? Second, my Councilmember Judy, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Moving on to item number four, uh, three, consideration to designate personal transportation vehicle crossings, PTV. Mr. Bill Ross.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, item number three this morning is, uh, an administrative approval of additional PTV crossings in the city. Uh, just to refresh your memory, Mayor and Council, uh, we are a PTV-accessible city. PTVs are allowed to drive on any road that is 25 mile an hour, uh, speed limit or below. When that 25 mile an hour road crosses another facility that is not 25 mile an hour, uh, our code and state law requires us to, uh, designate that as a crossing. And you have approved, uh, many of these over the years. We are bringing three additional ones for your consideration today. Uh, two of them are along Hardscrabble Road. Uh, these are crossings that we should have, uh, approved when we built this project, uh, similar to the one, uh, we've built, we approved in the green box on the screen. As you'll see, uh, the green box across, uh, to Chaffin Road has already been approved to you, by you. We are asking for two additional crossings here this morning. One along the southern leg of Chaffin, uh, you see in the red box, uh, in the middle of the screen. And the second crossing you see to Wexford Club Drive on the right side of the screen. Uh, these have been designed to allow the crossing by PTVs. We just not, uh, have officially, uh, designate them as crossings, uh, as required by the ordinance. Uh, this is a picture of the existing crossing already approved. Uh, this is a picture of one of the three crossings we're asking you to approve this morning. This is a picture of the second crossing we're asking you to approve. The third crossing is actually on Canton Street. Uh, Canton Street does not change names to Crab Apple until north of Woodstock. So the leg of Canton Street between Woodstock and Fowler Minhanet is still Canton Street and is still 25 mile an hour speed limit. We need a crossing of, of Canton Street across Woodstock in order for PTVs to travel from, uh, Canton Street south of Woodstock to Canton Street north of Woodstock. Uh, we're basically talking about the crosswalks you see on the screen here. Uh, staff recommends approval. Uh, you've approved many of these over the years. Uh, if approved, we've already coordinated from police, with police department. Uh, we will be forwarding these to a future city council meeting. That concludes my presentation. Open to questions.
Mayor?
I'm assuming, which I shouldn't do, but I am assuming that all of these crossings cross over to roads that allow, um, golf carts. Uh, the, and the reason why I ask this question is I regularly see golf carts on roads that are not permitted, and it's dangerous. So I just want to make sure that if you're gonna cross, use any of these crossings, you're gonna cross over to a road that will allow, uh, the golf carts.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. So all of the three crossings we've recommended for approval this morning bring you from an already approved location point A to an already approved location point B. Uh, for the example, we had on Canton Street, uh, the 25 mile an hour Canton Street south of Woodstock, along with the 25 mile an hour north of Woodstock, already allows PTVs on that road, uh, today.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you. So, uh, I have a couple of questions. Is the transportation department considering additional signs in there to indicate the drivers, um, of the vehicles? That is, uh, the PTVs are crossing there beside the pedestrians? Are you planning to have additional signs? Is question number one. Question number two, they will be using the same, uh, area of pedestrian to cross the street? Or they will cross through the road?
Councilmember Zapata, let me bring up my slides. So for Canton Street, uh, the crossing that we are approving is the crosswalk across Canton Street. Uh, we're basically looking at the crosswalks across Woodstock. And yes, so what we're recommending is that you deem these existing crossings as PTV-accessible. They already exist today. Uh, the PTVs would be using it, uh, to, to navigate from the southern leg of Canton Street to the northern leg of Canton Street. Uh, for the Hardscrabble examples, we are asking you to designate the crosswalks as the crossing. So yes, in this example, along Hardscrabble, uh, this crossing would be, uh, the trail is already designated as PTV-accessible. Uh, the PTVs would be sharing the crosswalk with other users. Uh, similar to the second example, uh, the trail on the right side of the screen is already deemed PTV-accessible. Uh, they are traveling to Wexford Club, which is a 25 mile an hour road. So we are linking those two facilities with the crosswalk you see indicated in the red circle on the screen. Uh, regarding signage, uh, we would be providing a bare minimum amount of signage to, to indicate to drivers that this is a PTV crossing, as we're required to do for the state law. Uh, we wouldn't handle these any differently than every other PTV crossing, uh, we have in the city. We're not gonna go, uh, we're not gonna go beyond what, uh, what the minimum is uh, that we need to, to comply with national standards. Uh, other crossings that we've already approved, that you can see, again, we have the crossing of Hardscrabble, uh, near the western leg, heading north of Chaffin. We also have one on Old Alabama over near, uh, Willow Springs in Stutterford. Uh, we would follow similar, similar examples of what's already been approved by you.
Mayor?
Uh, I've, I've got numerous questions. And, oh, Gary had me muted.
I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so I've got numerous questions. So Canton Street, for example, golf carts are traveling in the road. They're not on sidewalks. So how can you, so if you're traveling south on Canton Street, you're, you're north of Woodstock, you're, if you're in a golf cart, you're gonna be on the road, not on a sidewalk. So then, would you shift your golf cart over? to ride on the crosswalk and then shift it back over to get in the travel lanes? I'm confused. Now, on Hardscrabble, you've got a multi-use trail on one side that connects to a travel lane on the other, if I'm correct. So I'm, I'm just confused on why we would be using crosswalks when the golf carts are not on sidewalks.
Mayor, let me try and explain this. This is the easiest example for me to explain. So in the case of what we have on the screen and crossing designation two, we have a trail on the right side of the screen that is already deemed by you as a PTV accessible facility. Uh, we have a trail on the, a trail width on the north side, on the left side of the screen, that is already deemed as, as PTV accessible, and we are linking those two facilities. So the golf carts will travel from the trail across the crosswalk to the local road, Wexford Club Drive, that is 25 mile an hour. In the case of, on the screen of crossing designation here, uh, we are looking north here on Chaffin, towards Hardscrabble Road. The trail on the south side of Hardscrabble, uh, as you see on the screen, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but uh, along the crosswalk, basically going to the right on your screen and going to the left on your screen, that trail has already been deemed by you as a PTV accessible facility. What we are required to do, uh, by code is to deem crossings where that facility crosses a local road that is not 25 mile, 25 mile an hour or below. We are required to designate that as a PTV crossing, and that's what we're recommending here today. Uh, the crosswalk that the, links the trail from the left side of the screen to the right side of the screen. For Canton Street, our practice is to handle the crossings at our, our, let me take, let me take a step back on that. For, for the sake of explaining this on the screen, I've indicated the crosswalks in red. Uh, I agree with you. The behavior that we would likely see in the field, if the, if we approve this crossing, and this is happening probably regardless of whether we approve a crossing or not, is that the PTVs that are in the road, that can legally be in the road on the southern leg of Canton and on the northern leg of Canton, would stay in the road, would not use these crosswalks, and would simply stay in the road, uh, traveling across Woodstock, heading north or heading south. So this, this picture on the screen is probably what is confusing you. Uh, if this is approved, this would be similar to what an example that we have over on the east side of the city. Uh, something that is already, that was approved by this body a couple of years ago, that we currently have signs up for. Uh, Roxburg and Willow Springs and Stutterford, heading south on Old Alabama, is deemed as a PTV crossing today and allows, uh, golf carts to, it is a link basically between two 25 mile an hour facilities across a facility that is not 25 miles an hour. So PTVs would likely stay in the road, similar to the example that I have on the screen. These red circles is probably what's confusing, what's, what's, uh, confusing us here.
Okay, let me, I've got a couple of other questions. One is, this is very confusing. Um, and I think that we need to demonstrate how this is going to work for the PTVs. Uh, but the other question I've got, because that doesn't work for me. Canton Street does not work for me. It's one thing if we're crossing from a 25 mile an hour road to another and you keep them in the travel lane. It's another thing that if we're crossing from a multi-use trail to another multi-use trail and keep them on the trails and off the roads. We're sending a mixed message here. Where does, where does the golf cart need to be? Then my next question is, okay, with Canton Street, you go north, you pass Woodstock, and Canton Street stops at Minhinet Drive and Fowler. Okay, so if you go north of that, Canton Street is no longer 25 miles an hour. And how do we indicate to the golf carts? You've got to stop at Minhinet. You can't go any further than that. Uh, because this road, because I'll tell you, people think that the road just continues on it. They can be on it at this juncture, they can be on it at this one. So I just need to understand how we're going to give guidance to these vehicles, because I don't think we're doing a good job right now with it.
Mayor, um, Mohammed, if I can say something real quick. Um, I, everything you just said is correct. The, the speed limit break from 25 to 35 along Canton, turning into Crab Apple, happens at Fowler Minhinet. Ultimately, from a staff perspective, uh, we are relying on drivers of these PTVs to observe state law and to know where they can legally travel and where they can't. Uh, we have not been yet providing guidance, positive guidance to drivers of where PTVs are not allowed. Um, if that's something that this body is, is interested in, we can defer this item and bring it back with future guidance next month. Uh, Mohammed, I'm not sure what you wanted to add to the conversation.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I understand the confusion on this one. This intersection is a little bit different. So yes, I was just going to suggest, uh, if you guys want to approve the two crossings on Hardscrabble, we can move forward with those and bring them to the council and defer the Canton Street, Woodstock intersection designation, and that needs more work. I understand that. I'm sorry. I didn't realize the confusion between the crossing on crosswalk versus travel lane. Uh, so that's what staff is recommending now, to move forward with the two crossings on Hardscrabble and defer the Woodstock-Canton Street intersection crossing.
Well, and I, I think that we do need to look at it further, because there are enforcement issues. And with Hardscrabble, I need, I think that we need to be clear on where the vehicles need to be.
Okay, in that case-
Can they be on the roadway or on the multi-use trails? Can they, and there are enforcement issues, and the PD doesn't know what the heck to do with this stuff, since we're pretty much kind of allowing this willy-nilly. I, I think all of them need to be deferred and come back to us.
We will do that, Mayor. Let, let, let's just do that. Although at the end of trails, there is end of the golf cart designated times. But it's okay, we can just give it another thorough look and bring the whole item back with all-
Yes, thank you. And I think we need to indicate where you can drive your golf cart and where you can't. So when the trail ends, you're at a dead end. You've got to turn around and go back. Not, not get out into the travel lanes at that point. Same thing on Crab Apple, Canton.
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. So, uh, we were requesting a deferral then.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So it sounds like there'll be a motion to defer. I, I will be voting against a motion to defer. Um, with that, I, I certainly, Hardscrabble, I think staff did a great job with the one crossing that exists. I'm confident staff would do a great job with these two new suggested, uh, crossings. And as for Canton Street, I do support creating more of that, that connectivity, um, for, for the golf carts. And, and with it, I, I think I, I do understand the confusion. The fact that you're in the travel, you're in the travel lane, and it sounds like you're supposed to get in the crosswalk and then get back in the, the travel lane. So that, that piece of it makes sense to me. As for the fact that it goes from 25 miles an hour to above 25 miles an hour, that's an issue that I would think potentially exists citywide. I'm not sure how common it is, um, citywide on where there's streets that go from 25 to greater than 25. But anywhere that it does, that creates that same issue in, in risk, which makes this one, uh, not necessarily completely unique. But, uh, I guess a question I have, knowing that I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be voting in support of the, uh, the deferral, just a question I have for staff is, how does state law work in the sense that if instead of indicating that the crosswalk is for the PTV crossing, if instead we just have a sign showing that the travel lane is available for a PTV crossing, is that, is that in compliance with the state law, or is that in violation of the state law? Does state law require that it's in a crosswalk?
So Mohammed, I'm going to pull up a picture of, um, Stutterford and Willow Springs.
May I say, we're not, when you designate the crossing, it doesn't require, state law doesn't require that the vehicle move over into that. It's just the intersection. The state law is saying you can cross at this point from 25 to 25 over a road that's faster than that. That's all state law requires. It doesn't require they get in the crosswalk and go over. If they're in the road, they're going to go straight on across. All you're approving is an intersection. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. So, so Mr. Del Ros, I, Mr. Ross, I, I don't need to see the example of where we've done this in Willow Springs. That, that answers my question. So I think, I think the picture circling the crosswalk, I think certainly was confusing. But again, from just a, an actual logistics standpoint, it's, you know, we, we see, we see golf carts doing it, you know, already, even though they're not, they're not in compliance when they do it. And, and frankly, I, I'm certainly in support of just putting the official notification that it is a, is a crossing, so, so drivers and PTVs can be aware.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with the mayor here, because seems like we don't have a, I mean, since the city of Roswell was not designed for PTV, like for example, history city, south of Atlanta, designed from day one to have and handle PTVs. I think we need more clear, uh, policy. We need a more clear policy for PTV, not only for where they can drive, but also where they can cross and how they can cross. So then staff will have a clear understanding, uh, of what can be allowed, what cannot be allowed in terms of PTV, uh, crossing and where they need to cross, et cetera. So I think that, uh, this brings it to attention that, okay, we want to focus on PTV, let's focus on improving the policy. So then it's very clear for everybody where they can cross and where they can be of PTVs. Uh, again, we were not designed for PTVs. So we're just trying to accommodate this, which is fine, which is fine. But we need to look into the policy then clearly and, uh, state, um, where they can cross and how they can cross and, you know, analyze different scenarios and, and, uh, you know, you know, I don't like to go, approve here, approve there, but not here, but don't there. I don't understand this. I mean, why don't we tackle the policy first and analyze in depth the policy, and then will be much easier, uh, for Transportation Department to approve or not approve certain crossings for PTVs.
Mr. Halsey? Uh, Councilmember Zapata, it's not a matter of policy. State law has established what the city can and can't do. Uh, the PTV law that the city adopted is in line with state law. We cannot preempt. We cannot change state law. Yeah, I think what we're discussing is an enforcement issue. When you go from 25 to 35, if you've got people driving where they shouldn't be driving, then that is a matter for the Police Department to enforce those laws. Um, and if there are issues regarding the use of PTVs on roads and uh, whatnot, then those issues have to be addressed by our state representatives and state senators. And I know that that was done, uh, back in the day. When this first came up, I can tell you that council wrestled with this mightily, because I drafted 17 different versions of the PTV thing before we finally adopted one. Uh, so yeah, there was much discussion back in the day. Councilmember Ross?
I just have a question. Would it possible, or I'm just throwing this out, to mark the actual roadway uh, with a depiction of, and, uh, of the crossing that the PTVs are crossing in the roadway? And then also, for example, at the end of Minhinet and Fowler, uh, at that portion of the roadway to have a depiction of a, uh, PTV with a X through it, so that people would know that that's where, that's basically the road ends and, and you can't go on there. Uh, just, just throwing that out. I don't know.
Councilmember Hall, about something we can address and look into regarding options when we bring this item back?
Councilmember Tizer?
There you go. I'm in just a slightly different place. To me, uh, the ones on Hardscrabble, uh, basically were part of the original design. That's why those multi-use trails are there. So I think I'm fine with those. Uh, I'm concerned with the speed limit change, uh, from Canton to Crab Apple. And so to me, uh, moving forward, the, uh, design Hardscrabble ones, uh, and holding off deferring on the, uh, Canton Street one until Transportation could come up with a good, a good way of, of indicating that, you know, 25 just turned into 35 and the name of the road changed and all those sorts of, of issues. Um, uh, that one, I think we ought to, to defer. So that would be where I would stand on this.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So I would like to go back to the comments just made by our legal department. Uh, said that here we're talking about enforcement. But let me read again, let me read again the item description. Consideration to designate, to designate personal transportation vehicle crossings. I don't see anything here say enforcement. So if the intent here is really enforcement, let's spell it out on the item. If it's not, if it's just designate an area, then it's a matter of policy. So if it's state, local, uh, we need to address and consider that, but, uh, I don't see anything about enforcement here. So, uh, maybe was mis-titled this item, but if it's designate crossing is because, uh, I guess it's not a clear policy that staff just can go ahead and designate by the clear policy from the city or the state or anyone else. Thank you.
Nope. Mayor?
This has created another concern, and, you know, I hate to, um, get into making the sausage here, but we're kind of making the sausage. Uh, the signage. So, uh, you know, I would prefer that we defer all of this, because number one, I don't want to litter the visual vista of Roswell with signs. I, I, Transportation knows I hate them. Um, I know we have to have them, but they're ugly, they're obtrusive, and they take away the pedestrian feel of many of these neighborhoods and roads. So even with Hardscrabble, I would like to know what the markings will be. And my preference would be, uh, surface markings, not signs. And if you all can just give us an indication of how you'll mark the roadways, um, like I said, my preference is surface markings. Um, and then we can move forward with this. I don't see an urgency that we can't defer this and do it right to continue forward.
Councilmember Zapata?
For, for me, I, I just, I don't want it to be illegal for residents being able to cross, you know, Hardscrabble safely on a PTV and crossing from a 25 to a 25. So I, I certainly agree. I think the visuals and the signage could and should be improved. And at the same time, I just, I have concerns with knowing that for another month or, or months, it's going to be illegal for, uh, for families with a PTV to, to drive in safe areas.
Larmo, I'll tell you right now, we do not have any enforcement whatsoever of golf carts. So I don't think that's a danger.
That's good to hear. Thank you for that, Mayor.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you. So great, yeah, I mean, great point. I think signage should be part of the policy, the city policy. What kind of signage we're going to, uh, require, um, and in which situation. So I think that, yeah, signs is a very important part that need to be addressed on the policy. So we, we, you know, we, we can give a, an idea of, yeah, nobody wants to put many signs up there that looks really bad. So, uh, maybe signs and, uh, crossing, um, lights or whatever on the floor, et cetera, that should be part of the policy. A complete, understandable policy.
So Gary, if I can speak for a second. Uh, what I'm showing, uh, council on the screen here is representative of what we'd be looking at along Hardscrabble. This is the already approved crossing on the western leg of Chaffin, heading north. As you can see, we have, uh, the little, uh, yellow man sign with the arrow indicating where the crosswalks are. And we have an advanced sign, uh, letting drivers know that there is a PTV crossing approach. Um, what I'll say from a staff perspective regarding signs and striping, uh, as these are approved by council, uh, we have been installing the bare minimum to comply with federal standards. to comply with federal standards. Obviously, being cognizant of the, of the potential of sign pollution and, and putting extraneous miscellaneous signs, we have erred towards the bare minimum approach for crossings that have been approved.
Councilmember Plermo.
Mr. Del Ros, I have a question on that example. For the other sidewalks, so the two that, that we're really discussing if we want to approve or not, do those have the sign showing the crosswalk showing like that little people sign? Because in, in seeing that picture, there were two signs showing it's a crosswalk, one sign showing PTVs. So the way I'm interpreting that is really it's one sign. Because, because the two, because it seems to me like the, the other two are the fact that it's a crosswalk, not the fact that it's a PTV crossing. Okay, so therefore, thank you for showing that. So basically, the people sign is already there. So, so if we were to approve this PTV crossing, you would just be adding one additional sign which says PTV. Is that, is that accurate?
In, in the case on the screen, we would approach this similar to, to the previous example. And we would add a PTV crossing along Chafin in advance of the crosswalk.
Right, so it'd be one, one saw, one additional sign and it'd be advanced to the crosswalk.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob, do you have a share, like, thank you. Any further questions from the council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer this until the next committee meeting.
Second.
Motion to defer by the mayor, second by councilmember Zapata. I'm going to go ahead and call a roll. Clarification, next transportation.
Next transportation committee meeting and all of the crossings.
Mayor, can I make a request? I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a very tight turnaround to the next transportation committee meeting. Could I request a future transportation committee meeting?
We'll, we'll just make the motion. It's okay, mayor, can we make the motion to defer? That way it's just indefinite. We'll bring it back when we can on the next transportation committee, next available transportation committee. So we have a motion to defer on the floor with a second. I'm going to call a roll. Mayor Henry. Councilmember Hall. Are you, are you approving?
I approve the motion to defer.
You're approving the motion to defer, thank you. Councilmember Judy.
Yes.
Councilmember Plermo.
I oppose.
Councilmember Tyzer.
No.
Councilmember Willsey.
No.
Councilmember Zapata.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number four. Consideration of a resolution to submit a local maintenance improvement grant, LMIG, project list for fiscal year 2021 to the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, and to accept the LMIC funds for $843,873.77 from GDOT. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. Can you all see my screen?
Uh, no.
The slide.
Yes.
Okay, so this is, the next item is the, the local maintenance and improvement grant. So what you are approving today is the project list and the resolution to accept the funds. We've got, uh, so the GDOT's local maintenance and improvement grant is a yearly funding that comes from the general assembly's budget for the year. So for the fiscal year 21, Roswell's share, based on a formula that they use on population and lane miles, is $843,000, uh, $843,873.77. Now that's the program for Roswell. So the city's, uh, there is a match that is required. There is a letter from GDOT in the attachment in the packet that, that says that exact number that's available to Roswell. To get the maximum benefit, Roswell needs to match a 30% of that to do resurfacing in the city. So that request of, uh, you know, $254,000 was included in the quarter one budget review this past Monday for your consideration. So we have included the full match to get the full benefit of the LMIC money that is offered to the city. So here is a map and the list of roads. We are proposing for, for resurfacing using LMIC funding. So as always, you know, these roads are selected based on their pavement condition index ranking compared to all the other streets in the city of Roswell. And there is some other factors we consider such as the available funding and the utility and other project conflicts and the length of roads. All that comes into play, but really the basic criteria for the ranking is the condition of the pavement. So you see the two roads that staff is recommending to pave with the LMIC money for, for this fiscal year. So staff's recommendation is to approve the road list and the resolution that is attached to accept the funds. And if you approve this today, it'll come to a future city council meeting. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Floor's open. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councilmember Willsey. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Tyzer. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your hands. Edit passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item number five, consideration to accept the fiscal year 2021 road resurfacing list. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So next item is the, is the road list approval using the local funds that the city council approved as part of the FY '21 budget. So, uh, you know, this was a tough, tough year for the city, you know, because of the pandemic. So the city council approved only $250,000 for the, for the local resurfacing. Generally, it's a, it's a much higher amount. So that was already approved in the FY '21. And like I said before, you know, to get the maximum benefit out of the LMIC, at the first quarter review this past Monday, the staff's request was another $254,000. So that money will get used as the match towards LMIC, but we still get to use on the, on the local roads for resurfacing. So the list I'm going to provide, or is provided in your packet and is on the next screen, is comprised of the roads that, that would use the full amount. The $250,000 that is already approved and the additional $254,000 that you reviewed Monday, and it will get approved at a future council meeting. So the list is of the full $504,000. So here is a list and the map of the roads that we are recommending to, uh, pave, resurface from the local money. And we use the same selection criteria as I described as part of the item before. So again, staff's recommendation is to approve and we'll resurface as many of the roads as shown. We keep some flexibility in there in case the bids come a little bit higher. But we always have actually more roads on the list of approval from the city council that we may actually be able to resurface. And the reason for that is we just don't want to leave any money on the table. We just want to use all the money. And if there is any roads that are listed here, approved by you, and we can't get to them, then they will get put on, on the next year's list. So if you approve this item today, we'll bring it back to a future mayor and council meeting.
Do you have any questions for staff?
Floor's open. Mohammed, if you would share the screen, please. Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Mohammed, can you give us an update as to, or do we have an update on our request for a loan from the, the Georgia authority for the resurfacing that we applied for?
Yes, uh, thanks for the question, councilmember Hall. Yes, you approved for staff to apply for the GTIB loan for resurfacing up to $5 million. So we have been coordinating, the application was submitted, I believe, last week or earlier this week. So it's in, it's in works. So we'll just see how much we will get. The request was up to $5 million. So we hope to get most so we could go ahead and resurface more roads. And for that purpose, we'll bring a separate list. That list of roads would be in addition to the two lists that you have seen as part of this item and the previous item.
And just as a follow-up, is this master list available online for residents to view anywhere?
It's, it's not, but we provide it if they ask. The reason for that is it's, uh, so we have a total of 1,100 streets that we evaluate every year. So it is the work that gets performed pretty, pretty much every week. So the list, if you will, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a living document. It gets updated as we go. So we would never have the most updated copy on, on the website. But we always have a list ready. And if anybody requests, we provide it to them. But I would not suggest we put it on the website because it's changing like every week, every two weeks.
Councilmember Tyzer.
Uh, just to clarify, Director Ralph, the, there are two lists, right? The list we approved in the, in the last item and then this list, both would be approved for resurfacing in, in this year's budget?
Uh, yes, sir. That is, that is true. But again, like I said, we have more roads than the money that's available. And that's just to make sure that we use the full money that's available from LMIC, GDOT, and the local money. And if there is any streets that are left over on this list that you approved, we'll make sure to put them on next year's list. Or if you get any loan from GTIB, we will add these streets, any leftover streets on that list.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion? Councilmember Hall.
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councilmember Hall, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Tyzer. All in favor, please raise, any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. Sorry about that. Thank you. Edit passes unanimously. Moving on to item number six, consideration to finalize a right-of-way for Big Creek Parkway Phase One T-SLOSS project. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So this is the Big Creek Parkway Phase One project. It's one of our T-SLOSS projects like Gary mentioned. So the good news is that we are about to start construction. You can expect to see a construction contract by January. We are about to start procurement, procurement on this one. And a little bit of a bad news is that we are a little short on the money for the right-of-way. So the project we are talking about, this is the full master graphic for our Big Creek Parkway project. But the topic for today is these yellow lines. This is Big Creek Parkway Phase One, the intersection of Holcomb Bridge Road and Warsaw Road. So a couple of years ago in May of 2018, the city council approved a blanket right-of-way agreement for the staff to go ahead and start acquiring necessary right-of-way. The amount you approved back then was not to exceed amount of $2.2 million. And as of today, we have closed on 26 of the 28 parcels. And we are short of $126,149. So the request for today, there is money available in T-SLOSS in the project fund. But the request today is for you to bump up the not to exceed total value by another $126,149. So the overall not to exceed value would go up from $2.2 million to $2.32 million. So staff is recommending to approve to increase the not to exceed amount by $126,149. And like I said, there is enough funds available in the, in the project budget. Can I answer any questions on that?
Can you share your screen, please? Mohammed. Thank you. Does council have any questions? Is there a motion? Councilmember Judy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by councilmember Judy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Willsey. Any further questions or comments from the council? All in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, discussion of winding existing sidewalks. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. So this is just a guidance item to get your blessing to basically continue the best practice that staff has been following since forever, as long as I can remember. It's a practice about removing, you know, the existing sidewalk concrete if it's substandard or it needs to be upgraded and pour full width new concrete, even if the only deficiency is the width. So this is one of the items where every time we require it from the developers, you know, they ask a lot of questions. They don't like having to remove the existing part of sidewalk and pour a brand new, you know, bigger width of sidewalk. We follow the same practice as part of our project. So to get a better answer for those developers who question this practice. And also, it was brought up by councilmember Plermo at a, at a couple of open meetings. So I thought it would be a good idea to kind of, you know, re-investigate our practice and make sure that, you know, we are still on solid grounds and it is still considered a, a good, well-known industry practice. We have done all that and staff recommendation is still going to be to continue the same practice. But I want to give just a little bit of history. So like I said, you know, as part of developments and as part of city projects, we do not widen an existing sidewalk. We always take it out, remove it, and then pour a full width new concrete for the, for the sidewalk. There's not a written code or a policy on that. This is just an industry best practice. We also recently, in the last couple of weeks, talked to the, our neighboring jurisdictions. I have the list of jurisdictions we talked. They all follow the same industry best practice. And then, you know, couple of issues that we see, you know, if, if you want to do it any differently, you know, so the thickness requirement, if it's a sidewalk, it's different. But if it's a trail, it needs, uh, it needs a, a bigger thickness because of longer durability, you know, the trails they get used by, you know, they're different. You know, there's bikes on it, there could be PTVs on them and maybe utility vehicles. And then again, if there is more pieces, more joints in the, in the, in the sidewalk, there could be, you know, differential settlement. And again, that becomes a trip hazard for pedestrians. And then, you know, there is a slope range that is required for, you know, better drainage. And if the existing side piece of sidewalk that was built many years ago per different standards, and if you're just adding width, then we'll have to kind of match the same slope as well, as was built long time ago. So that, that's not, that doesn't give us the, you know, the best product in the field. And then again, you know, the more joints mean more opportunity for grass and weeds to grow. And then the color between the old and the new concrete, it, it pretty much never matches. So, and then, you know, again, maintenance is always an issue. If we start this different practice, you know, we would add a lot more to our maintenance work. And we already are swamped with a lot of pending requests for maintenance related to sidewalk and curb and ramp issues. So here is just an example of at least the statics. This is of course the worst case scenario. It's not in Roswell, we got it off of Google. But this could happen if there is more joints in the longitudinal direction as well. So staff is looking for your guidance, but our recommendation is to continue with the same best practice we have been doing for years and all of our neighbors are doing. So just looking for guidance. Can I answer any more questions on that?
Floor is open. Counselor Blair, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Ralph, first of all, thank you for listening to my, my questions and, and comments at those public meetings. And I appreciate you bringing this, this discussion forward. I, I think it's important because you're just having the, really that transparent discussion. And so, uh, so, so thank you. With that, um, you know, I certainly see, I certainly see, uh, staff's position on it. Obviously, it's a much better sidewalk if it's, if, if the developer is tearing up the old sidewalk and putting in a new sidewalk. And, uh, and, and so I totally get that. The same time, my position is, first of all, I fully support, uh, the city's initiatives and what we've got from residents regarding the Bike Ped Master Plan, that there are benefits to wider sidewalks. So clearly, I continue to be a large advocate for the city's policies on, on, uh, widening the sidewalks. There are advantages from a, obviously, we discussed earlier the potential of PTVs if approved by council, uh, bicycles for families, things like that. And frankly, in the COVID area, era, there are, there are advantages even just from being able to walk because of the five-foot sidewalk. You can't, i- it's very difficult to have two adults walking, uh, without bumping into each other. So I, I think there's, there's clearly a lot of benefits to our, our wider sidewalk policy and all great things that have come from a lot of hard work and, uh, and, and, uh, resident engagement from transportation. And again, knowing that I fully support, we should, we, we have our, our initiatives to widen sidewalks. At the same time, I, I am opposed to, uh, to any and all builders needing to, uh, you know, tear up perfectly good five-foot sidewalks, uh, to put in, you know, an extra foot if it requires six feet, the extra three feet if it's eight feet, and would like to find ways to make it easier to make sure that we're supporting redevelopment. And, and again, I think one way to do it is with the concrete. Uh, I think another way to do it kind of as a compromise perhaps could be if it was, they have the choice between they could either tear it up or they can add that extra foot or extra three feet of permeable pavers, which have benefits, uh, from a, from a stormwater standpoint. I, I'd look, I'd look for staff guidance if there was any support for that, but I just wanted to bring my position. The last thing I want to mention in my thought process is, uh, Mr. Ralph, just as you mentioned how this was a Google search and, and I don't, I don't know what it was, but it was probably Google search for the worst possible, uh, sidewalks widened in, in the country because those are good examples of a worst-case scenario. I do have, I did take three pictures of, of real stretches within Roswell. If we have, uh, if we have Jana on, I, I do want to just share those. I, two of the stretches were on Woodstock Road where I measured. It shows that it must have been originally a four-foot, and then there's the one foot, and there definitely is the discoloration. So you'll always know. There's, there's no question in that. At the same time, uh, and, and you can slightly feel the difference as well. But if you're jogging, if you are pushing a stroller, et cetera. So here's, here's one. Uh, okay, we'll start with this one. Here's one on Woodstock Road. This is, this is if you're going towards Canton Street from ninety-two. And so you can see a four-foot on the left, and you can see on the right was a one-foot. So clearly, uh, you know, you can see the discoloration. When I jog on it, I can certainly feel a slight difference. But at the same time, you know, again, my, my goal is want to make sure that we're just supporting, uh, redevelopment and not making it overly cost, cost burden some to have to tear up that four-foot sidewalk just to put in that, that five-foot. So this is one. If we go to the next one. And so here is instead, you're going north. So this, this is separated by a street. So this was not the same connection of that one. Again, same thing, a foot on the left, four-foot on the right. And this, so this must have been done over twenty years ago, I assume, given, given the policies because nowadays, they would have had to tore up that four-foot sidewalk on the right and put in the one foot on the left, if I'm understanding that correctly. And then if we could go to that, that, uh, the next one. And here's just a closer view. So again, you can clearly see the difference. But again, this is a real-life example in, uh, in Roswell. And then lastly, if we could go back to that brick one. And then, so this one, it's my understanding, and I could, I could be wrong, um, but it's my understanding that it used to be parking spots right here and, and too wide in the sidewalks because the city, many years ago, long before any of us were, were serving, uh, on council, that they saw, they, they realized there is benefit to wider sidewalks and more walkability. And you can see that clear color differentiation. So my assumption is the, the darker ones on the left were not the original ones, and I'm guessing the ones lighter on the right were. I, I could be wrong on that. But again, just these are some examples where it seems to me like it could make sense where we're, we're wanting to support redevelopment, make it easier for someone wanting to, you know, build a new house or, or add space to their building, something along those lines, as long as we're doing it in a safe way. And, and Mr. Ralph, you do bring something up, up that I hadn't thought of, which is if the width is the only reason, that's where I'd love to look. And, and frankly, I, I don't support having to tear up the whole, the whole sidewalk. I, I, I support finding a way where they can just, just add on to it. But you brought up another example. There could be a sidewalk so old where width is not the only issue, and there's other issues where it's not compliant for safety and other reasons today. And those ones, I agree, should be, should be torn up. So I'm purely just talking, if everything else is fine, it's purely the width. That's, that's my position. I do see both sides of it. So I, I certainly understand if, if council is, is, prefers the current process where, where someone does have to tear up the entire sidewalk. But I at least wanted to raise my point of view, uh, knowing there's different points of view on the topic.
Senator Henry.
Um, I can give you my experience. I actually, Councilmember Palermo, was on council when we filled in those parking spaces. We did not fill in those parking spaces for walkability. We filled them in to provide, um, on-street, um, dining. That was the sole purpose of it. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. One thing too is, um, I was having difficulty trying to determine where the, um, old brick pavers were and where the new ones are. And I think a brick, um, is much different than a concrete sidewalk. And I'm not seeing where we've had an issue. I haven't had a single call from anyone saying that they have been burdened by replacing sidewalks. Um, the first picture that, um, transportation had shown, um, I would venture to say that was in California, uh, just because I know in California, they have paved over everything. And so they've got a lot of mismatched paving going on. So, um, I would just like to say for the record that I support our transportation department following best practices.
So if, if I may just say, we, we're only talking about concrete sidewalk. If it's a brick sidewalk, especially in the historic district, there is no need to take out the existing brick sidewalk. Brick sidewalk is very easy to add on the width, too. So we're only talking about the concrete sidewalk. And one more thing I would mention, if you're creating a trail out of it and we let a longitudinal joint, that could be a problem for bicycle tires or maybe the strollers, especially if there is differential settlement. So I was just going to add that.
Counselor Tizer.
Thank you. Um, I've, uh, I've actually got a whole lot of other issues and problems that we've created with our sidewalk policy that, uh, we need to begin to address. You know, if, if, if the, one of the purposes is to support redevelopment, we've created some, some anti, really anti-redevelopment, anti-business issues, uh, in, in, with unintended consequences of some of this policy. Um, you know, I don't have a problem with, with, uh, with what, what's being presented other than, you know, there are some situations where we're requiring sidewalks to be put in where there's currently no curb and guttering. We're requiring sidewalks to be put in where, uh, 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 at, 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 at big widths where it doesn't particularly make, make, make great sense and there's no latitude, uh, to, you know, for, for staff to, uh, to create a better, a better product. You know, i- i- in this case, you know, the, one of the, one of the bigger costs of, of trying to do this is, 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 is existing infrastructure that you've got to work with. And so, you know, we've passed, we've passed a sidewalk policy that, that, that seems simple, but underneath it, it's got some significant issues that I think we're going to need to address in the future. And, uh, uh, you know, they're coming to the, to the forefront as, as some, some redevelopment happens. Um, and, and, and I think, I think this is a much bigger discussion than just this particular issue.
Counselor Willsey.
Yes, um, thank you. And, um, thank you, Mohammed, for the presentation. And as, as you brought up in so many different examples, I think there's safety, quality, maintenance, and aesthetic issues with, um, involved and following best practices in, in my mind seems to make the most sense. Um, I also wonder in some cases if we can look at things on a case-by-case basis, you know, does it make sense? Is it in an area where it makes sense to widen from five feet to six feet? Um, perhaps we look at, uh, the, the major areas we designated through the Bike Ped Master Plans are the ones that would be, um, uh, widened to the full, to the full width. And in some ways, you know, there is a case-to-case basis, some discretion on whether or not, um, in, increasing the width, you know, i- is required. So, you know, I, I agree, some further discussion needs to be made as far as the overall policy. But I do, as far as widening sidewalks, agree with following best practices.
Counselor Spott.
Thank you. So coming back to the point here of item number seven, uh, discussion regarding existing sidewalks. I want to bring it back to the topic here, the existing sidewalks. Um, I think that, you know, using good judgment and criteria is good enough. Uh, if the existing sidewalk is in good condition, so my question is why I would want to require to waste of resources in term of extra cost and environment, environmental impact because this removal has to go somewhere and move it somewhere. Uh, when the sidewalk is in good condition, I don't think it's a good enough reason uh, to ask to remove everything, uh, like again, implying extra cost and environmental impacts when, when the sidewalks are in good shape. Um, so if the sidewalk is not in good shape, uh, you know, adding a foot won't help. Uh, in a, a brand-new foot right next to a really bad-shaped sidewalk doesn't make sense. So, uh, I am, you know, in support of, uh, like I said, environment, you know, minimize environmental impact and minimizing, eh, you know, the waste of resources. In this case, extra cost and extra time probably for building and, uh, when it's in good condition. So I think it's just, uh, makes sense. And, uh, and the example we saw, we saw the extreme example, really bad somewhere in this country. And then we saw some other examples in the city of Roswell. And we have to ask ourselves, is this worth, is it worth, uh, you know, when we need to add this foot to get everything out and, uh, or not? So I think that, uh, it's something that we need to, uh, I guess this is just for discussion tonight, or today, this afternoon. So, um, but I'm in support of, uh, minimizing the waste of resources and at the same time providing a wider, uh, sidewalk for present and future, eh, use.
Any further questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, discussion of the sidewalk program policy to determine new measures to prioritize sidewalk projects. Mr. Ralph.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to have Dave Cox, uh, present this next item.
Thank you, Mohammed. Thank you, Gary, and good morning, mayor and council. A lot of good discussion on sidewalks, so I figured we would keep this going. Uh, so I have a presentation, uh, basically recapping some of the things we talked about at the August committee. If you bear with me one moment. Uh, you can all see my PowerPoint correct? All right. Uh, so basically, I want to recap what we've done in the past on our sidewalk program matrix. This again is the way the city ranks and prioritizes sidewalk gaps across the entire city. Uh, about five years ago, we did not have anything in place. There was no policy or detailed process. And the transportation department was tasked with coming up with a data-driven process uh, to rank sidewalk gaps that are located, um, on arterial and collector-type roadways. Uh, five years ago, staff did a peer review, researching our neighboring cities and other municipalities and local governments throughout the region. And then also staff went out and collected a large amount of data and generated a inventory documenting all the sidewalk gaps within the city. Uh, and then again, at that time in two thousand fifteen, uh, sit, staff had gone and through the, I guess you call it the sausage-making process again, uh, on how we could develop these recommendations and criteria. We met with the mayor and council, I believe, four or five times uh, to hash out the details, and finally, a process was adopted. Now, more recently, we, uh, we wanted to look at this again. We always like to update the mayor and council, uh, every couple of years on the process so it's familiar and everyone understands it. And one thing we did in two thousand nineteen with the development of our bicycle and pedestrian master plan, um, sorry, I should say our award-winning, uh, bike and pedestrian master plan. Uh, and thank you again to the mayor and council for recognizing our efforts, uh, the other evening. Uh, one of the things our consultants was tasked with was coming up with possible ways to improve upon that process from five years ago. Uh, we had a lot of good recommendations and we discussed those with you in August, and I'll recap them briefly here in a few moments. Um, but one of the key feedback items we received in August from council members uh, was to look at the various scenarios we presented, and one of the good comments we had is, hey, these scenarios are all great. The criteria look good, but, uh, what is this telling us? How many of these, uh, sidewalk gaps are showing up on all four of the lists? Maybe we should just focus on those. And here's a list of roads with sidewalk gaps on them. Um, I'll show you a map here in just a second. Here is the total map of Roswell, the entire city showing all of our sidewalk gaps. We have over a hundred and thirty of them. Uh, if we were to complete them, it would cost an estimated forty-seven million dollars. Uh, that's in today's dollars. Uh, so there is a lot of work ahead of us. Um, one of the things I wanted to show you was those ten or so gaps, uh, that we showed in August that were on all of our criteria, or I'm sorry, all of our scenarios, are these ten here. I hope you can see them. They're kind of highlighted or flashing on your screen. Uh, that's where a lot of them were located. Um, the majority of them were in the top ten already. Uh, there was a handful of other ones, uh, that are in the top twenty or top thirty. Um, one thing that I did notice is some of these gaps are already on corridors that have existing capital projects. Uh, you know, for example, the gap right here is along Old Holcombe Bridge Road is going to be solved by the Gateway Project. It's going to be adding bike and pedestrian facilities along, uh, Big Creek Parkway, along that corridor. So this sidewalk gap is an example. We, we likely wouldn't fund with sidewalk money because the Big Creek project will take care of it for us. Uh, so I just wanted to show you the current list of projects. Moving on to the criteria, uh, I always like to refresh everyone's memory on this one. This is the currently approved criteria. I'll briefly go through these, uh, so, uh, everyone has, can understand. And if you have questions, I'll be glad to talk to them. Uh, the first one is the perceived safety issue. Uh, this is basically staff going out and making a judgment call on how safe or unsafe they feel. It's, there's a lot of human interpretation. Uh, one of the recommendations in the Bike Ped Plan was to replace this with a, a more data-driven metric. Uh, comment we heard from the council in August was to perhaps use traffic volumes as a possible data point to measure safety. Uh, so that is one of our recommendations. The next one is the eighty-fifth percentile speed. This is a metric that measures or displays where speeding of, of traffic is occurring. Uh, in Roswell, we have a lot of, um, geographic or terrain issues that cause speeding, a lot of steep hills. So it's, it's not just bad behavior by drivers. Uh, gravity does have some impacts on some of our hillier roads. And it's important for pedestrian safety because studies have routinely shown, the higher the speed, the less safe it is for pedestrians. And if there is unfortunately an impact or collision between a vehicle and a pedestrian, uh, the pedestrian almost always loses. And the higher the speed reduces survivability. Uh, so that is, that is proven time and time again. So we definitely want to keep this one in here. Uh, the next three are proximity or geography-related, uh, basically a quarter mile within a public school, a city park, or commercial development. And what that means is a walk-up commercial business, uh, like a bar or a restaurant or a retail store. The next one is, so we call it the goat trail. Uh, some people call it a cattle trail or a desire path. Uh, basically what that is, is, you know, when you're driving down the road, you see the patch of grass on the side of the street. Uh, there's obviously a little worn trail or footpath in the grass. Uh, that's clearly evidence of pedestrian demand. Uh, so that's a very low-tech metric, but it's a very reliable one, uh, that we like to keep. Uh, the next one is the sidewalk on the other side of the road. This one is a little confusing, so I just want to explain it. Uh, this is a concern, whereas if, let's say you live on a busy street, uh, you live on Norcross Street, or you live on Pine Grove Road, uh, there may not be a sidewalk in front of your house. Uh, we documented that. We track it. We, we have it in our system. But if there's a sidewalk across the street from you on the other side of the road, um, your gap in front of your house gets fewer points. Uh, the problem with that is on some of our busier roads, there may be a sidewalk across the street from you, but it's very difficult to access it. You may not even legally be able to cross. You may not even legally be able to cross the road even get to it. So one of our recommendations is to change the scoring criteria to kind of make that balance out. So sidewalk gaps aren't inadvertently penalized due to traffic. And the last one is the gap on our hub and spoke system. This is the approved trail network that was in our Bike Ped Plan last December. It was basically a system of multi-use trails across the city. And if one of the sidewalk gaps is on that system, it would just get extra points. Here is the pie chart showing the current criteria and weighting. It's pretty balanced out. 20% kind of go to the safety factors, the remaining 80% go to the other factors like proximity, geography, or some of the other factors I mentioned. I'm going to show you a couple more pie charts in a moment. The one thing that we talked about in August, if we mess with this or make dramatic changes to that, the pie chart, you're going to see some of these slices get skinnier and skinnier. So that is the only thing we're going to have to discuss in a few moments and get some consensus on. Some of the other items we track that are not scored are these items here. I'm not going to go through them all individually. One of the things I did want to draw attention to, since we were talking about development earlier, is item number seven. Staff does track if sidewalk gaps are on capital project corridors, or if there's a chance for developer, an opportunity for a developer to install the sidewalk. And again, that's because we don't, we have, you know, few precious resources as a city. We want to make sure we're spending our funds wisely. And if there's a chance for a developer to build a sidewalk for us, we want to take advantage of that. Likewise, if there's a capital project being funded by other means, we definitely want to take advantage of those dollars. So to recap the Bike Ped Master Plan recommendations, I'll go through these quickly. We do want to prioritize sidewalk gaps on both sides of the road. That has to deal with the traffic volumes. Again, if there's a sidewalk across the street from you, you may not be able to safely get to it. So we want to make sure the gap in front of your house or on one side of the road doesn't get penalized for that. We also want to consider factoring in population density. This had to do with census block data based on more densely populated areas of Roswell. We may give some points to sidewalk gaps in the more densely populated areas of the city. We also want to come up with implementation tiers for the hub and spoke system. This is very simple. We already award points to sidewalk gaps on our trail network. This would also just add maybe a few points to sidewalk gaps that lead to it. That's fairly a simple process to include. And also, we want to consider transit accessibility. We received a lot of comments on our sidewalk matrix. Why don't you take into account MARTA bus stops or sidewalk gaps that lead to MARTA bus stops? Well, in our analysis, we found that we already have commercial corridors. Sidewalk gaps already get a lot of points, they're heavily weighted for commercial business access. And we found the MARTA bus routes basically mirror our commercial corridors. So we thought instead of creating a new criteria, we could blend those two together. There were a few instances where MARTA bus stops would push up points on a few sidewalk gaps, but we didn't think it was worthy of coming up with a new criteria when we could dovetail with our commercial corridors as they mirror each other. And then lastly, one of the recommendations from staff, when we reviewed the numbers, we discussed this in detail in August, and there was some support from the mayor and council at that time, just based on the discussion, was maybe we consider putting a $300,000 cap on our project list. So when we spend our annual allotment of local funds, our city funds, we perhaps only pursue projects, sidewalk projects that are below 300,000. We would still track all the sidewalk gaps citywide regardless of cost, but the more expensive or high-dollar projects, we would maybe pursue with other funding sources, whether it be federal aid program, or state funds through GDOT, or a capital project, or if there's maybe one day a future bond referendum. Any of those things, we could use to target some of the higher dollar sidewalk gaps. In our research, we found that if we did only target cost or project cost under 300,000, it would shrink our grand total down to around 12 to 13 million dollars, which is a lot more manageable number when you're talking five, 10, 20 years out. So that was something I just wanted to revisit with the mayor and council as it was discussed in August, and there was some feedback on that. I'm only going to show you two draft scenarios this time. I showed you four previously. This is basically one scenario in which we implement the cost ceiling approach that I just spoke about. This is basically keeping everything as is. We don't change anything with the criteria, we just insert the $300,000 cap. And I talked through that in a minute. That is one option that we had some feedback on in August. Here is a draft of that, what that would look like. This is the top 20 sidewalk projects if we implemented that. You can see the column over on the right-hand side has the planning level estimate. Everything's under 300,000. And I'll be glad to go back to this in just a moment. The other option, we're just calling it Scenario X. One of the comments we heard from the council in August was, hey, the Bike Ped Plan, it's great, the recommendations sound intriguing, but show us what that looks like. What if we implemented all those recommendations based on staff analysis? Here's what that would look like. The pie chart, I have another slide showing a larger version of it, and we can talk about that in a moment. But basically, we would keep five criteria unchanged, leave them alone. We'd add two new ones and modify three. The new ones are insert the population density, use the cost project ceiling of 300,000. And then the modifications, we would change the perceived safety criteria. Again, that was the one where the human element, we have staff go out and make a human kind of a gut call, we would replace that with the data metric using traffic volume. We'd merge the transit and commercial businesses into one criteria. And then lastly, we'd consider traffic volumes based on which side of the road it's on. So if you're on a busy road, you're not, your sidewalk gap's not penalized for you're being on a busy street if there's a sidewalk across from you. Here is the pie chart, assuming we inserted all of the Bike Ped Plan recommendations. So I might yield to questions in just a moment. One thing I thought it would maybe be good for the conversation is maybe we talk about the criteria first, and then we talk about the weighting. That way, staff can understand if the criteria are sufficient and we can sort out the weighting as second part of the conversation. This is not set in stone. We just implemented these points based on what we have today. If you remember, I showed you the pie chart at the beginning of the presentation, the percentages were roughly 10 and 20%. You'll notice they are a little bit lower here. Based on the new criteria, we added the density one, that's the only new one, this purple one on top. So everything shrunk a little bit. So we kind of thought, if we're going to do this, we could talk about the criteria first, you know, let's say you're making an omelet for breakfast, what are your ingredients? Let's talk about the ingredients first. And then we can talk about the quantities and how much you want in there. So with that, I just, I'll close out with this. Here's what the matrix looks like if we follow the Bike Ped Plan. You'll notice a lot of the same projects kind of reappear here. And I'll be glad to come back to this in a moment during the questions. And then lastly, in closing, we'll obviously discuss, get feedback from the mayor and council. We'll bring this back to a future committee or council meeting as needed. And then lastly, I just want to remind the mayor and council that one thing we are continuing to do at the staff level is update our cost estimates on some of these sidewalks. If you recall, the Bike Ped Plan recommended a lot of new multi-use trails around the city as part of that hub and spoke network I spoke about. One thing staff have to do is update those cost estimates. When we did the estimates five years ago, they were assuming five-foot sidewalks. Well, now the guidance is we have some wider sidewalks in different parts of the city. And if we have a multi-use trail, costs may go up significantly on some of those gaps. So staff will update those, and I just wanted to remind you of that. So with that, I'd want to yield for questions, and I would love to get guidance today and maybe get some consensus at the staff level.
Counselor Zappata.
Thank you, Gary. For me, I have a hard time thinking 50 to 100 years out. And if I take this list and I look at the average annual funding, you know, and I've said this before, we're 50 to 100 years out of completing it. But when I look at the various methods, with maybe the exception of the $300,000 one, I get to that in a minute, it create either, any of the options create virtually the same lists. And so if we look at a more reasonable timeframe, say five years out, I'll give you 10 years out, we'll know that at five years, we have somewhere between 2.5 and $5 million of normal funding that would come through. And 10 years is somewhere between 5 and 10 million. And so if all of these methods, with the exception of the $300,000 one, give us similar answers, then I think we know in the five-year range what we need to do. And I think we also can get a decent feel of what happens in the 10-year range. And I think the risk here is overcomplicating this when, when, when the methods all give us basically the same answer and, and, and show us that in reasonable timeframes of five and/or 10 years, we get to the same place. So that's, that's my general thought on this, because after that, after a 10-year timeframe, it really doesn't matter, everything's going to probably change anyway. And finally, I'm not a big fan of the $300,000 issue. I think that creates some, some other, some other problems. But as one leg of a way to evaluate, if this was just a third methodology and it gives you the same answers as the other methodologies, then it's just confirmation that, that those are the most important and the ones that should be done in, in the, in the either zero-to-five or five-to-10-year kind of range. But, but I think simplifying it to that kind of timeframe, use all the methods to see if you get the same answers, you know, that, that seems to, to make a whole lot, lot of sense to me. Thank you.
Counselor Judy.
To Matt's point, I, I was kind of looking at the same thing, but when you pull up the $300,000 list, there were two, two things that I think popped up that I saw very quickly on there, were two of the projects that we hear a lot about is Pine Grove Road and Roxborough Drive, which you didn't see, I don't believe I saw in the other. I see Oxborough in X, but I didn't see Pine Grove Road. And, and my, my thought on this is, is if we're able to get some stuff done that is impactful and people feel that there are sidewalks being put in and it's equally balanced across the city for, you know, a set of money, then maybe for, for, for a little bit of money, maybe we do this. Maybe there's a hybrid approach to it. You know, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe we look at it combining the two lists and doing some, going down this list at a rate. And, and that way, we have a hybrid approach to the other list and this list where we are knocking some out, but we are maintaining the, the list that doesn't seem to change no matter what the methodology looks at. So I, I know I'm very intrigued by, by this because I think there's some opportunity to make some impact for under $300,000, looking at these numbers in some very needed places. So I, I would look at a hybrid approach to this. I don't know quite know what that looks like, but that's just my initial thought.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, thank you, Gary. And thank you, Matt and Matt. I actually agree with both of you. My, my question, or my observation is two things. Depending on looking at these two scenarios, you can see that you, your total score, you look at things that were scored higher in one, to accomplishing pieces that are scored lower in, in the other. So, so, so that, that's an observation. But my comment is, I noticed that the recommendation was a priority to do both sides of the road where a sidewalk was, is required on the section of the Bike Pet Plan. And I just wanted to have staff to speak to that a little bit because in my mind, if, if I'm understanding that correctly, would we be not better off to just do one side and to allocate resources somewhere else where we want sidewalks? And the other thing, speaking to Matt Judy's point a little bit, is there are things that may be ranked higher because they meet all of the criteria, but people could care less if there was a sidewalk. There's just no desire. Whereas something could be ranked lower, Pine Grove Road for the example, and, and I know perhaps this gets subjective, but where people are really asking for sidewalk to get to the commercial district. So I, I don't know if there's an answer, but those are, I just wanted to share my thoughts.
I, I would like to speak to this, and yes, it does get subjective. And I was, when I was first elected, we did not have a matrix and sidewalks were very political. Whoever screamed the loudest got sidewalks. Whoever elected someone from their neighborhood got sidewalks. And I'll give you the example that with Pine Grove. I'm not judging whether or not Pine Grove should get sidewalks or not, but two members of council have been elected in the last number of years that have the ear of Pine Grove residents and Pine Grove residents want these council members to provide them with sidewalks. So for me, I would like to keep, so should I tell my neighbors I'm in Hennett, that they need to get out, they need to rally council, they need to write emails and letters in order to get a sidewalk? That's what we were trying to avoid with the matrix so that it isn't political. We are looking at things that would require sidewalks. Now, I'm not saying that that's the end-all, be-all to a list, but I do want to stay away from the political aspect of this. And I, I just, it's very concerning. We used to have the same problem with road resurancing. And, and we still, to some degree, have the pressure of that continuing today. So I think I, I would like to say, I'd like to be very careful on how we look at these matrices and how we adjust them because I do not feel that they should be subjective.
Counselor Zappata.
Thank you. So, you know, I would like to, to go back to something very objective, which for me is the starting point, which is called Sidewalk Program Scoring Criteria, which is, I believe, on page 31 of the packet. I don't know if we could share this page, the scoring criteria? And I will. Perfect, thank you. Yes, the slide. And I would like to continue advocating specifically here for two, two of the lines, the 0.25 mile from public schools and 2.25, zero, sorry, 0.25 mile from city park. And I will continue advocating to increase the maximum points here from five to 10 on both cases, public school and city park. So I don't understand why is that low when, you know, that is definitely something that, you know, maybe people won't go to spend any money there, but they will definitely go to learn and improve their life or have a recreational on the parks. So I know that there is not money spending here, but it's definitely providing the community, which is 0.25 mile from and to the public schools and city park. So I will continue advocating to increase these maximum points. At least for me, makes totally sense to get them more priority. But I don't know if at some point we can tackle this, or if this mayor doesn't believe that these need, deserve higher points, that's fine too, but I just want to give my perspective. Thank you.
Counselor Poirot.
Thank you. So I agree with a lot of the things that have been said by everybody. So I think most people, if not everybody's already talked, and I think everybody said some stuff I agree with. Kind of actually more just kind of a question. So Councilman Zapata raised the point that public schools are ranked lower than, than commercial business. And obviously, there's the money part, but curious a little more for that background along with public parks. But, but also, I noticed there's a, there's a suggestion from the Bike Ped Master Plan to include public transportation in it, and I, and I do agree with that. But I guess what surprised me was the recommendation was But I guess what surprised me was the recommendation was .7 miles from, .75 miles from public transportation, in which case that's where I wonder, why is it .7 miles to public transportation versus .25 miles to commercial business, public schools and, uh, and parks? It seemed to me like the, the distances should kind of be aligned. Looks like David, looks like you know the answer?
Uh, yeah, a lot of this was all, of course, this is all the adopted policy from five years ago. Uh, and again, the, the MARTA, the three quarters of a mile MARTA criteria, that's not currently in our scoring. It was just something we track. Um, one of the, if I recall from previous discussions, uh, from staff members before I was here, one of the concerns is the, the larger the footprint you make for those, whether you use a half mile, three quarters or whatever, that you start encompassing more and more of the city. So if you're looking at MARTA bus stops, uh, the MARTA routes run along Highway nine, Holken Bridge, um, so you start encompassing more and more sidewalk gaps with a further footprint. Um, the same goes for the schools and parks. Um, I believe that's why the quarter mile was determined. Um, so you're just, you, you know, if you encompass too much of the city, you kind of negate the point of adding that criteria. And, and I agree, it's frustrating, uh, because I mean, I would like to think most people would walk more than a quarter mile to a park or to a school. It's, you're right, probably realistically half, three quarters, maybe even a mile. Um, but as far as the scoring criteria go, it may negate that. Um, and, and to, I believe Councilmember Hall or was talking about some of the criteria. Um, I believe it was on Pine Grove Road has always been a subject of debate within the city. Uh, one of the reasons it scores low is because it's not near those amenities. Um, it's not near a park. It's not, unfortunately not near a school or, or commercial businesses. So, um, it, it, it has been a source of frustration for roads like that across the city that aren't near those amenities and they just unfortunately score lower based on this process.
Senator Woolley?
Yes, um, thank you. And just a, an, an observation or question, I'm just curious about what the correlation is, um, sometimes between the heavy usage and goat trail versus when compared with proximity to commercial city parks and public schools. Um, and I would also think that those things also factor into the density equation as well. I mean, if you have, um, you, you're going to have higher, higher concentrations of populations probably near the commercial areas, um, and near schools and parks and resulting a, a goat trail. So just interested if there is a correlation in those and maybe it, it would make sense to kind of condense some of those things. Um, and then another thing as far as maximizing our resources, if there's a way and maybe in one way that you slice and dice it, it does this to somehow figure out the impact per, uh, mile or per a tenth of a mile or something like that. So I think that way we'd be able to see the areas, the sections that, that do have the highest value.
Senator Judy?
Yeah, I just want to say I, I, I do agree with the mayor on, um, making sure this stays within the matrix. I, I, my, my point was, is how i- is it possible to weave in based upon costs, uh, more affordable with the higher priority as you go down through the matrix? Um, because if you get outside whatever calculation you have, so you got the lower, the lower cost ones ranked by, by the pie chart in the matrix and you have the whole list ranked by matrix. So do, are you able to then raise some of those ones to get, you know, some done in the process, but it's still within the matrix where we are not, it's not a willy-nilly, you know, who, who, who screams the loudest thing? I think that that way we stay within the, um, the obje- objective and subjective stuff, um, and, uh, move forward and get some stuff done. I, I think that's the largest, like Councilmember Hall said, I think that's the largest, um, problem is, is there are some locations that probably score well that there are no, that, that, that cost a lot and it won't be used a ton. So I think there's, there's some ways we can, um, make the matrix, uh, better. Um, but I do think we still need to have, for lack of a better term, the scientific approach. But I think looking at, um, costs, uh, and do getting some stuff done in, in the list will make sense.
Well, one thing we could do, Councilmember Judy, is at the staff level is maybe take a closer look or a deeper dive on the scoring, how they score and look at the cost and maybe do a very elementary cost benefit analysis, something, something like that. Um, it, it's difficult to determine demand for pedestrians. It's, it's a little easier for vehicle traffic because we have regular counts on that. Um, we do take pedestrian counts, but it's a very tedious process that takes a lot of time and effort. Um, and, and I agree with some of the previous comments I heard, um, you know, we don't want to over complicate this. Um, you know, one of the things I did charge our consultant firm with was are there any criteria that could be struck or removed? Um, they were very hesitant to make those type of recommendations given they were approved by this body previously. Um, so, yeah, I agree, there are some challenges here with over complicating it. I mean, we are glad we have a system, it's working, uh, but it is regrettable that some sidewalks we know are in demand or requested by our citizens don't score high and, and there's just not an easy solution to that.
Mayor Henry?
Well, I would like to say that I agree with Councilmember Zapata regarding the public schools and the city parks. I think that that's extremely important. Um, when you talk to the citizens of Roswell, um, our schools and parks rank the highest in livability and the reasons why they want to be here. So I think access to those facilities are very important. Then with Councilmember Judy's comment, I agree with him and I, I'll just give you this analogy, and I don't know, Dave, if you can work with this, but, you know, for example, um, debt advisors will tell people that are in debt to pay off their highest interest rate, uh, credit card first. However, they're might, they might have other credit cards that are lower interest rate that they could pay off in a couple of months, but there's one school of thought saying, take the highest one and work through it. So I think, um, Councilmember Judy, what you're saying is, is a mixture of the two because, um, the, it's just the school of thought. So, um, if you feel better, if you pluck off those lower interest rate cards and get rid of the debt. And I think you're saying the same thing with the sidewalks, that we should have a mix of the big projects and the smaller projects that make us feel better and make us feel as though we're getting something done. And also it clearly speaks to the citizens of Roswell that, you know, we are out there, we are working on this and we're not pumping all of our money into one project, um, so that we're trying to spread it out. So I, I agree with, um, both of you on those topics. And I don't know, um, Mr. Cox, if there's any way you can work with that concept?
Uh, yeah, we, we can call it the Dave Ramsey scenario when we come back to the mayor and council. Uh, it's, it's definitely a good idea. Um, yeah, that, that is definitely a possibility. Uh, we could, uh, sharpen our pencils a little bit and maybe come up with a hybrid. Uh, you have your low hanging fruit on one side and then maybe you target one of your high dollar ones. Uh, I, I think that's kind of what I'm hearing. Uh, so we spread the money around. I mean, traditionally the city sidewalk budget varies year to year, but, um, I, I think the highest it's ever been was possibly a million dollars and, and, and some of the council members have keyed in on that, that if you have a $47 million program or maybe a higher than that, uh, we're going to be here a while, right? Um, so, um, maybe it would be another way we could look at it, um, moving forward.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Dave, you got everything you need?
Uh, yeah, I, I believe we'll, uh, take another look at this and we will try to get on a future committee meeting, um, hopefully within the next couple of months or maybe shortly after the holidays. It, it's up to your pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Public Works number nine, we're deferring that to the Public Works Committee Meeting. Moving on to other items. Item number 10, Committee Member, uh, Councilmembers Hall, Paul, and Zapata, discussion regarding the city of Roswell's right-of-way policy. Senator Poirot?
Thank you. So this, this is an item really to discuss that, that the current, current policy within the, uh, the city is there's a, there's a blanket policy. It's my understanding that absolutely, uh, nothing can be in the city right-of-way. Obviously city signs, things like that, but nothing can be in there. And that's, that's something that I would like us to discuss and potentially address. Um, there, there've been, there've been requests in, in situations. I, I'm familiar with one in, uh, a request in Willow Springs. I believe Councilmember Hall, uh, was aware of a request that I think was in Brookfield. I think there have been a, I, I, I've heard of, I think, a few others. And it's, and this is a policy I would like us to look at. I think there are absolutely, um, uh, things that need to be taken into account, for example, safety. So without a doubt, putting a, putting a, uh, a hard, very hard, large structure in the right-of-way could create visibility risks, could create traffic risks, uh, you know, of just, just automobiles too, too close to the road. So I think, I think there's certainly some things we'd want to, we'd want to address, address, exclude, et cetera. But nonetheless, I do personally feel that, that, uh, there should be the opportunity for mayor and council to potentially approve something within the, uh, within the right-of-way. And that's, that's the discussion that I, I'd like to have and, and certainly, uh, open it up to Councilman, Councilmembers Zapata and Councilmember Hall for any additional color. Uh, but then would love the opportunity for just a, a discussion among mayor and council as, as well as with staff.
Senator Hall?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mike, for that introduction. So specifically, some of these things could, are, are, could benefit the city as a whole. Uh, my example, I met with the HOA representative from Brookfield and their specific interest is to, uh, on the approach to their entrances, to beautify that, beautify it with some landscaping materials and, um, hang a sign. Uh, the sign, it, it, a, a small sign just indicating that the entrance to this, the subdivision is approaching. Um, did speak briefly with legal about safety aspects and it having to be a breakaway type of sign, you know, to protect, protect the city from liability, but also there could be some language perhaps drafted that protects the city from any liability going forward. So that is, that's where this came up. And also, um, subdivisions or homeowners associations, uh, perhaps can, need to be in the right-of-way to do security and ha- hang cameras. And this is something that has come up with Willow Springs, that they need permission so that they can, uh, install their security equipment, which they would take full ownership of, uh, and not have any liability to the city. So that's, just wanted to add that.
Mayor Henry?
Um, I've got a question for legal. Uh, there are a lot of questions with, um, right-of-way and I think that this is a, a bigger issue. And my question for legal is, um, can we allow someone to contract for services within the city right-of-way without our agreement? So, uh, what I'm going back to are, are, for example, utilities. You know, we contract with, um, we've got, I forget what the terminology is, but we've got agreements, franchise agreements. Uh, would we need to have franchise agreements? I'm just talking about the security cameras. Would we need to have franchise agreements with security companies or can we allow, um, people that are not related to the city to use our right-of-way and contract privately?
It depends on how, uh, the city wants to go about doing it. Back in 2008, we discussed this issue and we developed a policy which would allow, uh, HOAs to put things in there, uh, with the idea that they would share the data with the police. Um, if there's a city benefit to it, um, just like as utilities, there's a city benefit to it, I think we can make that work. Um, of course, there are a lot of other issues about if the city allows that or weakening, uh, you know, privacy issues and other things like that. So all of those have to be addressed. We, uh, we had a rather extensive, uh, policy that Transportation and Legal developed back then. I don't, it never went anywhere. I don't know why. I don't remember it being taken on it. Uh, but, um, we'll be happy to look at it again and see what's changed since then.
Well, and my next question is regarding signage or, uh, whether it's monument signs, breakaway signs, whatever the case may be. Um, if we permit that to be erected in the public right-of-way, does that also mean that when we do public work in the right-of-way that we have to do on occasion, that we are responsible for replacing those items that are in the right-of-way, et cetera?
No. Um, I mean, currently almost all the mailboxes are in the public right-of-way.
Right.
Um, and people do enhancements to their mailboxes and whatnot, and it's with the understanding that if that needs to come down, we take it down and it's up to you to put it back. So anything that's in the public right-of-way without a license for land use, which is what we do, and the Brookfield example, uh, if the HOA wanted to come and say, uh, here's what we want to do, we can grant a license for land use for a specific project and say what can and can't go and say where it goes. And we've done that in other instances. And that way they've got something to stand on and we know what's there. Uh, that I think is the better way to go. Uh, Transportation should always be involved because they have to address the safety issues. Um, and when you get into right-of-way, Public Works needs to know as well because they can say this might cover up something essential, this may be something that we've got to have access to now. Uh, and, and the other thing is just to make the HOA or the homeowner understand that if you put something there, the city is going to be able to take it down if it needs to at, I mean, we'll take it down at our expense, but if you want it back, you've got to put it back yourself.
Thank you.
Senator Woolley?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Um, Bob, did you, this policy, was this policy passed or is it, was it just in draft form in 2008?
It was just in draft form. Uh, uh, council was considering it and we, uh, I, I see from the minutes that we presented a rather, uh, involved policy that required a vote by, uh, homeowners and HOAs and all that, and then council never did anything with it.
Okay. Um, yeah, I guess I'd like to take a closer look at that, what was discussed in 2008. Um, and then also some discussions, I believe we were expecting to hear from the Police Department, from the Police Chief, Public Safety and Transportation about the data ownership and how that might be, you know, what the implications are, um, related to the data that's collected in the right-of-way. So again, I think we've got a lot of homework to do here, so.
Well, one thing I would say, any, any data that's shared with the city, uh, is going to be subject to open records. So anything, you know, you'd have to consider that as well because if it, you know, if it's part of an open investigation and shielded, and once the investigation is concluded, it's open. If there is no investigation, it's open. So, uh, people are going to have a lot of ways to burden the city with things that you may or may not want the city to be involved with.
Senator Judy?
Yes, um, I know, uh, since I've been on council, I've been served with a lawsuit regarding, um, as we all were with, uh, something in the right-of-way and an incident that happened. Um, therefore I, I really, uh, would like to ask your opinion, Gary and Bob, regarding, um, discussing this, A. B, what, uh, tactic would you take? I, I, I think there's been a lot of questions here, um, that I think legal, uh, Transportation, Public Safety all need to weigh in on, um, from a staff perspective, in my opinion. Um, so I, if, I, um, I would defer to you, uh, Gary, on, on next steps here, uh, from a staff perspective to, uh, get us some information.
Could I ask that, this is very fact-specific, um, depending upon what somebody wants. For instance, what Councilmember Hall talked about, um, that would entail one set of facts and I think it's fairly simple. The security cameras in the right-of-way brings up a whole host of other issues and requires a much greater, uh, look at it. If those two things, we can study those two things. If there's something else, we would need to know that because again, it's all going to depend on the facts. Because again, it's all going to depend on the facts.
Councilmember Bob.
Thank you. So, yeah, I will consider a policy that will contemplate objectively established neighborhood with a legal homeowners association. That is critical. Not anybody who lives on it. So it has to be a homeowners association, legal established homeowners association, that will take ownership, that will take ownership of the installation, operation, and liability inside, you know, to be installed inside the subdivision, what is considered the inside of the subdivision. So given all these points, I guess, for what we've been talking today is a lot of things that need to be still studied and analyzed and recommended. So, but I think that that is a frame that I would like to see, you know. Again, you know, established neighborhood with legal homeowners association will take ownership of the installation, operation, liability of any kind of an infrastructure or structure on a public right-of-way inside of the subdivision. So I think that I would like to see and consider a policy that contemplate this.
Councilmember Plural.
Thank you. I feel like I heard a definite number of different things. So first off, as I kind of mentioned my initial thoughts, I would not support anything that is going to create a danger to anybody in an automobile, bicycle, or walking. It's my understanding there's ways through breakaway aspects, soft aspects, there's ways that that could be accomplished. But I strongly believe we should not be putting just large, dangerous things within the right-of-way. And then separately, heard something around, you know, data sharing and things like that. I see that as a separate, perhaps additional conversation. I think, I think the first step is, does this council feel through an official, proper process, there should ever be a time when the right-of-way could be granted for use of a neighborhood, et cetera? And I think the answer should be yes. I think it should, I think there does need to be a specific process around it. I don't think anybody shouldn't be able to just put whatever they want in the right-of-way anytime. So I think, I think there does need to be the process. But again, I want to make sure we're separating the fact that, first off, focusing purely on the right-of-way, should there be something? And making sure that the city is not, you know, put with any liability, to make sure that residents are protected, things like that. And then again, if we're talking about, you know, data sharing, things like that, I feel that's a whole, you know, additional conversation that can't really be had unless we agree, should something go in the right-of-way, should something be allowed to go in the right-of-way.
Mayor Henry.
I would like to speak to Councilmember Zapata's comments. And I would just like some clarification. I believe Councilmember Zapata, you were referring to things internally in a subdivision. So that would not include entrances that are on streets outside of the subdivision. But then also, a requirement with an HOA and the two subdivisions we're talking about do not have mandatory HOAs. So I just would like some clarification on that and whether or not you think that those are issues.
Yeah, for me, it has to be established homeowners association. Not every single individual on, whatever, all Alabama Road, facing all Alabama Road will request to have a camera pointed out to the neighbors. So for me, it has to be a legal, established homeowners association from established neighborhood. And, you know, you can tell when you're driving or walking into the established neighborhood. So as soon as you walk or drive into the established neighborhood, then this is what I would like to see and consider a policy and a process to request the use of right-of-way for any infrastructure or device. If I make my, I would be happy to keep clarifying if it was not clear.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmembers, what did you want to do with this item? Councilmember Hall.
I would like to, I guess, separate the items and move forward the non-camera type of items that we're talking about for HOAs to be able to make the requests to improve landscaping and/or, you know, install a monument that meets safety requirements and take all responsibility for that. And do more research on the other item with the camera.
Councilmember Henry.
Thank you, Gary. I'm going to agree, I like Bob Halsey's concept of the license agreement for land use. I think, I think there's something there. I think that's very, that could be very positive for us. Having said that, we've got three more items on our agenda today. Meeting was scheduled from eight to 10:00. We're now at quarter after 10:00. I've got a family health issue going on, so I can probably stay for one more. But I'm going to have to leave. I really would like to participate in all of these. So to the extent that any of these items are not critical and might be able to be deferred, I'd ask its sponsors to do that so that I'd be able to participate at a later time. Otherwise, y'all carry on.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the council. At the last committee meeting, we didn't get to the public safety items, which had the license plate reader program. We're going to have the Roswell PD go over that. How we use the license plate readers, how they're being used nationally, how some private organizations, agencies are using them. And then kind of talk a little bit about the request that Willow Springs brought in. Because I think it's important, before you guys consider the right-of-way policy or ordinance, that you understand exactly what the subdivisions or the people are asking for out there. So that's why we had that. After that, we are going to come back to a Transportation Committee meeting. If you all decide if you want to proceed with us studying the license plate readeration in the right-of-way, we would then come back with, to committee with an ordinance or policy amendment for you all to consider to allow the LPRs or other items within the right-of-way. So if I can make a recommendation that we could stick to that, have Public Safety, RPD, come back at the Public Safety Committee meeting and go over the LPRs. And then if you guys decide you want to move forward, come back again with Transportation at that committee meeting with the results from that LPR discussion. Anyway, I'll leave that to you, Councilmember Plural.
Excellent. Thank you. And before I respond to what you had to say, Mr. Palmer, as well as this topic, as for Councilman Tizer's comment, so I am the sponsor of not the next item, but the following. It's already been deferred a month. I am supportive of deferring it to the Admin Finance Committee, which would be the next committee. But I'm not supportive of delaying it now, the second month in a row. So I just want to bring that up. So I'm happy to discuss and vote it today. Happy to defer it to the next meeting, not the next ComDev one. But back to Mr. Palmer's comments, as well as kind of where we stand as the next steps. I guess, so certainly, anything, any policy that we're going to have to support LPRs within the right-of-way, that I absolutely do want to hear and have that public discussion with Public Safety. Again, I don't see it as tied at the hip. And the reason being, I think, again, if this council decides we're not going to be willing to allow anything in the right-of-way, I don't think it makes sense to be discussing, should we allow LPRs in the right-of-way? And we do have other requests in other situations, you know, separate from that. And the example is the Brookfield one. You know, they would be dependent purely on, are we going to allow something in the right-of-way, yes or no? And in fact, Willow Springs, even though their most recent one dealt with a camera, they actually had one in the past for something in the right-of-way, which was in their median that they wanted to use. So I think there are other uses, irrelevant of whether this council decides to want LPRs in there. So that's why still, I see as the first step, just staff drafting what a potential right-of-way policy could be. And then again, you know, I think an add-on to that is the potential of, you know, LPRs or cameras and just how that should work.
We are going to task staff on doing, studying or working on this. All need a formal decision by the council to do that. Councilmember Willie.
Yes, thank you. I do agree with supporting the digital versus non-digital uses of the right-of-way. And I would like to see those separated and to have further discussion with Public Safety and Transportation about the digital. And I would like to see a policy brought to committee regarding the non-digital or, you know, property uses as well before that's moved forward. So if we could consider that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Plural.
In the spirit of time, I'd like to make a motion that I motion for staff to draft a policy on how Mayor and Council can allow use in the right-of-way, based on the discussion you would have heard during this conversation.
Mayor.
I would like to add here, when we're talking about things in the right-of-way, are we just talking about breakaway items? Are we talking about guardhouses? Are we talking structures, permanent structures? Because that broadens this a great deal. And I don't think staff has enough information to draft a policy. Now, if we're just talking about breakaway items, I think that that would probably be doable. But if we're just going to give a broad blanket of approval on what can be located in the right-of-way, that's another issue.
Knowing that safety is paramount and knowing there cannot be safety issues, breakaway, I think, makes sense. But is a flag considered breakaway? I'm not sure. My hope is just staff is able to listen to this conversation, know that we all care very much about safety, and just want to look at a high-level draft, knowing that this council will have a lot of work to do after seeing just an initial high-level draft.
Can you repeat that motion, Councilmember Plural, so I can get a doctorate of it?
Sure. So, motion to direct staff to draft a policy based on the discussion and the comments provided by Mayor and Council during this discussion, which creates a potential process for Mayor and Council to approve use within a right-of-way. And again, that's taking into account safety and so potentially, you know, purely breakaway.
Second, I'd like to mention, second, my Councilmember Zapata. Any further questions during this discussion, Mayor Henry?
I've still got concern because I'm not seeing a consensus on council on what we're going to consider in the right-of-way. So to ask staff to take individual comments and await those is a very difficult endeavor for them. So what I'd like to ask is, what kind of policy are we drafting? Is it just breakaway items in the right-of-way? Is that what we're looking at? Or are we looking at, for example, if we all decide that a guardhouse in the right-of-way would be an appropriate use, we can allow that? So I'm asking for further guidance on what we're asking staff to draft.
What I'm asking for is, I don't see how that needs to be determined today. We can certainly talk through all possible items. But my preference is, they just get a boilerplate draft for us to kind of walk through. And in the next committee meeting, we can discuss, you know, what type of items and how we narrow the focus. But I'm asking more for just a very high level that none of us will support. Because again, we all have specific ideas on what makes sense, what doesn't.
Well, I'll tell you right now that I will not support the motion. And the reason why I won't support the motion is we have not given staff guidance or consensus on council. And until we have that, I will not support directing staff to do a willy-nilly, high-level draft of an ordinance where they don't know where we're going with it. They don't have any guidance. Staff will tell you, let us know where you want to get to and we'll get to there. But we're not telling them that right now. We're just saying, oh, you know, you've got time, go draft a policy. And I can't support it.
Do we have a motion on the floor, Second, Councilmember Willie?
Might I suggest that Legal distribute the draft that was written in 2008 to council? And we could all take a look at that and then come back and discuss this separately at a future committee meeting, specifically located in physical items in the right-of-way? And then that we go through the other process that Gary's described with Public Safety and Transportation.
No, I need some clarification, a little more clarification on that policy if I'm going to amend the motion to that. So, Mr. Halsey, that policy, was that specific to mentioning digital and mentioning cameras? Or was that specific to things in the right-of-way? Would that have covered putting a, you know, neighborhood flag in the right-of-way? You're a mute.
So it was, my understanding was that it was for a guardhouse in the median at Willow Springs. So it was for a physical item within the right-of-way? And I think the policy would cover all physical items within the right-of-way.
Okay, and that's something that you, so that's already drafted, which because it was based on a guardhouse, it was drafted to just cover physical items within the right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay.
I can provide that to council.
So I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable having that provided us to ahead of time. And we can bring this back, we can bring this back next month with that using as a, as kind of a draft baseline?
Okay. So, do you want to withdraw your motion and then just bring this back to the next Transportation Committee meeting?
That's fine. And just so staff and council are aware, when we bring this back next month, it will have that drafted policy within the agenda packet.
Any further questions from the council? Thank you. Number 11, Councilmember Judy, approval of an ordinance to amend Article 3 of the City of Roswell, code of ordinances, add a new section, Article 3.7.21, home delivery of alcohol by online package to retailer. Councilmember Judy.
Okay, in the, to keep all our time in order here, this I brought forward in response to House Bill 879, passed by the legislature earlier this year. I've heard from many restaurateurs and others, be it the boutique shops like Pinky's Up, Deep Roots, that there, that we should look at to opt into this bill. Restaurants would be able to serve beer and wine with dinner, I believe. I'd have to ask Mr. Halsey if that's how this is currently written, but that would be my intention. The bill says basically you could serve unopened containers and that there's a whole process that you go through to get this done under the bill. I know Alpharetta, Savannah, Coming, and some other cities around the state are in the, are have passed or in the process of passing this. And I think with COVID and the unsettled world going forward, this could help any of our small businesses and restaurants with an alternative revenue source and also for the citizens of Roswell to, that are staying home and out of harm's way, the ability to order this with their dinner or to their home for their pleasure. So today, I wanted to bring this forward in the hopes of time of moving this to initiation so we can get it going, not knowing what the next four or five months look like. But I'm open to any comments and/or changes from council.
Let me add, the way this is drafted, this accomplishes the, what the state requires the city to do that would allow restaurants and other alcohol providers to have home delivery. I realize it's, it doesn't read that way, but that's the way the state law is. And this tracks the way the state law is written and gives the broadest possible leeway to our restaurants and package stores to have home delivery of alcohol. You all can set a fee if you want. You can tell us there shouldn't be an additional fee. And license holders are allowed to do it. We would recommend in Legal that they have at least an administrative fee associated with this so we can keep track of who's allowed and who isn't. And it doesn't require initiation, it just requires two readings.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Halsey.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilmember Judy for bringing this forward. And bringing it forward with a draft ordinance, it makes it quite a bit easier to know what we're discussing. And so, you know, I could be supportive of this.
I'd like to add that the mayor had asked for this before Councilmember- I'd like to add that the mayor had asked for this before Councilmember Judy asked for it. And I was in the process of drafting it, and Jana asked for it. And so it wound up with Councilmember Judy's name, but Mayor Henry's name should be with it as well.
Well, thank both of you then.
Counselor Spada.
Yes, so for clarification, because I see here, home delivery of alcohol by authorized packaged goods retailer. And I would like to make a, there is a distinction here. You have two different, you have the on-premise, which is called the restaurant business. And then you have the off-premise, which is all the package stores or retail stores who sell wine, beer, and liquor. So I would like to clarify, is the state law referring only exclusively for package store retailer stores to be able to do home delivery of alcohol, beer, wine, and liquor? Or also include the on-premise, which is restaurants, wine bars, bars, et cetera? So I would like to clarify there. And then we always talking about, I understand, of unopened containers. We're not talking about open containers in here. So I want to make these points clear. And then I would like to know if the state law included both concepts of home delivery, for home delivery of alcohol?
The reason Section A is, is state law defines packaged goods retailer, and that includes restaurants and package stores. That's why I use that specifically, because I don't want to deviate from the state law. And I would recommend we leave it as that because frankly, when you read the state laws, it clears mud in certain places, and we don't want to venture into places we don't need to go. The Department of Revenue for the state is coming up with rules, and that'll come out next year. This would allow our restaurants and package stores the broadest leeway, and they are on notice to go to the State Department of Revenue and find out what the rules are.
Any further questions, Counselor Plurmo?
So yeah, I think this totally makes sense for, you know, so many great reasons. Want to thank Councilman Judy for bringing this forward, apparently Mayor Henry as well. And with that, I'd like to, just for the spirit of time, I'd like to motion to move this forward with the administrative fee that was recommended by staff.
Most on the floor can move forward, is there a second?
Clarity to move forward to the next regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting.
And a second, Counselor Halsey.
Yes, sir.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any further questions or comments from the council? All favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous, thank you. Item number 12, Counselor Plurmo, consideration of text amendments to Section 4.2, District Components, 5.2 District Components, and 6.2 District Components of Unified Development Code, UDC, to add default zoning conditions. Counselor Plurmo.
Thank you. So this is something that we did have last month. We've certainly discussed before. I think it is very important. There is a good example that came in from a resident hoping and/or suggesting and recommending that we approve this. They provided draft language from Alpharetta, which is certainly much stricter than Roswell's code in a lot of different ways. That being said, based on Councilman Tizer's request, as I mentioned, I'm not supportive of waiting another month because I do feel this is crucial. But in the spirit of working together, I am supportive of motioning to defer this to the November Admin Finance Committee meeting if there's preference for that. So that'll be my motion. I see a second. If that fails, I'm certainly happy to discuss today.
Can you repeat that motion, please?
Your motion to defer to the November Admin Finance Committee meeting.
Motion to defer to the May, is there a second?
Second.
Then, Counselor Halsey, any further questions or discussion? All favor, please raise your hands. And it passes six to one. Moving on to item number 13. Councilmember Spada, consideration of text amendments to Section 9.6.5, Vehicles, Service and Repair, Order B, Power Wash of Unified Development Code, UDC. Counselor Spada.
Thank you. I would also echo the approach of Councilmember Palermo, but I would like to give a little background about it. So I would like to also, you know, we've been seeing a lot of, with few car washes coming out in the city with all the vacuum and the brushes just facing the public sidewalks or roads. And that is not something that is very ethical. So my approach here is to have the same approach that the, you know, many years ago, I guess, mayor and council has with the storage, public storage places, where they ask them to have a cover windows if they have windows, and they make it look more like an office or a building than a storage place. So the same approach is bringing up here so we can make those car washes look more discreet, less brushes and vacuums in our faces when we're driving or walking by. So I see that there are coming a few car washes in the city, and I would like to bring a more ethical look of them, like, you know, most probably the neighbors right next to them, they have. So I want to keep it more consistent. And I think that that was very smart, what was done with the public storage years ago. And I want to bring the same concept for the car washes. But again, I would like to, on the spirit of having a complete mayor and council discussion, I would like to propose also to defer this item for the November Admin Finance Committee meeting and have a more detailed discussion among all seven elected officials.
Second.
Motion's are made and seconded. Next, the Admin Finance Committee and seconded. I mean, we're bypassing our internal policy by doing this, and we're going to load this agenda, and we're going to keep continuing to load those agendas. So just be aware of that. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion by the council? All favor, please raise your hands. And motion carries. And as the last item, we are adjourned.